Looking to John Stern together.
I'm in it.
Or I guess back together. Conversation with John Stern, so that might be, and since what he's going to be using is...
I drink wine.
That's your coffee.
All right, let's get the City of Marine City Commission meeting to order. Regular meeting Thursday, September 6, 2018, 7:00 PM. Is Reverend Wilson here? If not, let's please take a moment of silence for our dearly departed. And can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabash.
Here.
Commissioner Avery is absent this evening. Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Lepley is also absent. Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City Manager Levin.
Here.
Can I please get a motion to excuse Mr. Avery and Mrs. Lepley, please?
I make a motion to excuse Sub-Commissioner Avery and Lepley. This meeting.
Motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carried. Moving on to communications. I need a motion to receive and file historical commission meeting minutes, January 16th. The Tifa meeting minutes, July 17th. Planning commission meeting minutes, July 11th. And a letter from Linda Gabler.
Motion to approve the communications as presented?
Motion support. Any questions on the communications? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next, we'll go up to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioned residents. I'm just bringing some, my name's Joe Snangster, Fire Chief, Marine City Area Fire Authority. I'd like to just bring some good news to the community. We applied in November for three grants. One was for a new fire engine. That one was denied. We also applied for one from the M Bridge Pipeline for $1,000 to replace one of our outdated AEDs that was awarded to us, that has been purchased. And our other grant, we applied for a regional grant through FEMA with Clay Township Fire Department, Elgin Act Fire Department, for a total of $539,000. Friday, we were awarded that to replace all of our air packs for a cost of, for the fire department, right around $200,000. We'll be doing a 10% coverage on that. Not going back to any community, looking for any additional monies for that 10%, because we're using our liability fund that we have left over from previous budgets. And we will be ordering these new air packs. We're going from about a 30-minute air pack to a 45-minute air pack. All three departments are going to buy the same exact air pack, so if we go to mutual aid with them, we can use their air packs and they can do the same for us if they come to us. We'll be ordering 25 to replace some that are almost 20 years old in our department, so... I think it's one of the biggest grants this department has had, and I believe a long time, if not the history of it.
Joe, you want some questions?
Sure. I'll be here until after the meeting, or if you want.
No, I mean, would you like to answer a couple of questions?
Yep, anybody's got questions.
Anybody have any questions for him?
No, I just want to thank you guys for all your hard work in getting that grant. I know how hard that is.
Thanks.
And I think Joe may have understated, but the regional, working with Clay and Elgin Act, and it's been a good, good process, and with us working together with the grant, it made it more accessible for us. And I think it's a program we're hoping to recreate again next year, so, because we're meeting next week, and trying to come up with another good dual work-together grant to get it taken care of.
And that $539,000 will purchase 75 air packs for all three departments. We'll get 25, Clay will get almost 40, and I believe, or 30-some, and then Elgin Act did, I believe, 15 or 18.
Yep, and hopefully on our wish list, we'll actually have an integrated thermal imaging camera with some of the masks, so we won't have to actually, it's going to make our guys that much more efficient on a fire, because I'll actually have it on a heads-up display right in the mask, so I think it's going to hasten us on life-saving, because it's going to be right there, and then it leaves an extra hand open for the guys, too, so I think it's a good program. Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name's Jacob Bryson, 274 North Main Street. I'd like to address you on the topic of the road millage. We, as a community, are at a crossroads. We have two options at this point in time. The city cannot afford to fix the roads as they are and repair them with the current amount of income that it receives. It's impossible. It would take over 30 years, and the roads would continue to deteriorate. So, the option is to approve the millage, at which point, we can take the money and, instead of fixing the roads in 30, 40, 50 years, now you can fix them in four to five years. Or, we can continue on the track we've been going down, and in 10 to 15 years, instead of talking about repairing roads, you're going to talk about replacing roads. And at that point, you're going to add at least one more zero on the end of the dollar figure, if not two. So, I'm here to urge the Commission, and more importantly, the voters in November, to approve this millage. I believe that at some point, the roads are going to have to be fixed, so it's either we pay now, or we pay later, and we pay big later. I know it's been brought up before, let's find grants, let's find other funding mechanisms, and as a member of the Infrastructure Committee, there are none. Now, I speak for myself, not for the Committee, but we have looked at federal, state, county levels, and there is no funding available, either in the terms of grants, loans, et cetera. It doesn't exist beyond that 51 money that we already currently receive from the state. So, it's kind of up to the citizens of Marine City. You want to pay for it now, and have nice roads, or you want to pay for it later and pay more later while our roads continue to deteriorate. So, I urge the citizens to vote yes in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the Commission?
Michael Frank, 525 Woodworth Street. First, I want to congratulate the Fire Chief. That's awesome that you got that grant money. I would love to see more of that stuff. You know, there are grants out there, you know, to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Bryson said. Not too long ago, St. Clair got a grant for road resurfacing using recycled tires. It wasn't much, but it was something, you know, and it was out there. And, you know, we really need to focus on anything and everything that does not put any more burden on citizens. You know, grants, we need to increase revenue. We need to try to attract more business here. We need to try to, any way we can, increase revenue, bring in more business. However we're going to do that, you know, whether we invest in an economic development head, something, something, because people here are already taxed enough. I mean, the roads, this 313K a year, I mean, in my opinion, just looking at the numbers, it doesn't add up. You know, 313K, we just had a repair on Mary Street where we did the water and sewer lines, and it was, what, .2 miles of road that went over top of that, and that was 160K. I mean, the numbers just aren't adding up, just with this millage that we have on the table right now. But, that's all I'm going to say about that for now. Another thing I want to talk about is our code enforcer. I know she, you know, people have been up here complaining about the code enforcer, which, you know, she doesn't bring good news, obviously, she's a code enforcer, but some of the things are just kind of ridiculous. I know the mayor and City Manager is already aware of this next story about that, but it's just, things like this shouldn't happen. You know, a guy has overgrowth in his backyard, okay? The overgrowth is behind a privacy fence. This guy's in really bad health, really bad health. Went to the hospital, was in the hospital for a week, went to the doctor, and he was admitted to the hospital, found out he needed a triple bypass surgery. He's suffering from heart failure, and, you know, he's already been given letters by the code enforcer, which he spoke to her about, and she gave him some time, said as long as he's making progress, then it should be okay. So, he goes in the hospital, gets out, calls her as a courtesy, like, "Look, I might need a little more time, you know, I just found out I need triple bypass surgery." And basically, she walks back the whole thing. She basically says that he's going to have to get it done, and that, you know, legal action is going to have to be taken if he doesn't. And she even went as far as to say that maybe he should consider selling his home if he cannot upkeep the home and move into a condo. This is a life, this is a guy who's lived, you know, this is childhood home. I mean, I just, I don't know. When I heard that, I was absolutely enraged. I was like, "You've got to be kidding me." Like, these are the exact people that we should be trying to help, trying to protect, which is what I did. I told him I would help him out to, you know, get his backyard cleaned up, and, you know, he can't even get his pants on because his legs are so swollen. So, he's not even able to help, you know, help point me around or, you know, to help him out with it. And, you know, she, and that's not the only thing. You know, she's dinging people for work trailers being in front of their house, you know, landscaping trailers. You know, she sends a letter that says that they got to be, you know, moved within 24 hours, or every 24 hours. This guy goes to work every day. He pulls in front of his house, because it's a lot easier than backing a trailer into his driveway every single day. These are things that are just unnecessary. It's really not what we were sold, or what I was led to believe when we made her full-time. You know, she was half-time, made her full-time, and we were told that she was going to, she needed to be full-time because they were going to do rental rehab. I know Mr. Haas has been up here umpteen times complaining about the slum lords, the slum lords, the slum lords. Where's the rental rehab? You know, I haven't seen or heard anything about it, what happened to that. She's just riding around 40 hours a week now harassing people. She's getting people tickets for, a guy has a double-wide driveway, and one part of the driveway looks like it's in front of his house, or on his yard. She doesn't even, so she writes a ticket for that, thinking he's actually in his yard, when it's actually a driveway. So, she's not even getting out to talk to people, she's not even getting out of her car to do anything. She's just driving around in her car, writing things on her clipboard. Like, we need, we need better direction for her, I think, I hope. I don't, you know, this would fall under City Manager Levin. Yeah, we need her to do more verbal warnings, more talking to people, rather than just writing certificates, not in any manner.
Louise Gibbs, 218 Southwater Street. I just want to say the code enforcer, someone complained that we had an outdoor cafe, so we got a letter, and we went right to the city and talked with them, with you, and you explained that we needed to get permission to have an outdoor cafe, so we turned everything in to all of you. You've been very kind to us, and we're hoping that you'll approve it. And I apologize that we put it out without asking first, so. Thank you.
Mr. Moran.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, just a point of information, I guess. We have had numerous citizens up here complaining about the code enforcement as far as the rental units go. You need to know that the holdup is the upcoming change in the ordinances. We are in a position where those ordinances, all of our ordinances are under review, but those ordinances in particular are currently up for review by the Planning Commission on Monday. We hope to have that revision in your hands by the next meeting. Once we get those approved and in place, then the code enforcer has up-to-date realistic ordinances to apply as far as rental agreements go. So, I know it's been frustrating. It's been a long time in the process. Ordinance review, I can't tell, how many have we gone through so far? It's a very painstaking process. Part of the reasons we're having problems is the ordinances that are currently on the books have been there for so long, and many of them no longer apply to our current reality. So, it's a very laborious process. We want to get it right, so we're taking our time to do it right. And I know there are some citizens that are frustrated about the time it's taking, but we'll get it right, we'll get it right this time, and then the code enforcer will have something to go by to bring these violations to heel, okay? So, just FYI, that meeting is Monday. If anybody wants, is interested in the process, you're invited to attend, and again, we hope to have it in your hands for your next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Anyone else? Hearing none, moving on to approval of the agenda. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next, I need approval of the City Commission regular minutes, August 16, 2018.
Still moved.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions, concerns, or deletions on the, yes?
I have a correction. On page five, under City Managers' Report, it should be met with USDA Rural Development Representative instead of World.
Any other corrections or deletion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next, I need a approval of minutes for the City Commission closed session, August 16, 2018.
Still moved.
Oh, we can't really have too many questions on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve business license for custom metal works and a taverns license for River Place Art and Pavilion.
Do you want these one at a time?
Oh, no, they can do these together.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any questions on the two licenses? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on to unfinished business, we have a letter here from Tetra Tech on the Safe Route to Schools.
We have a couple matters of business to deal with for the Safe Routes to Schools project. First and foremost, I just want to inform you that the bids came in, and the bid for the project was actually above what the grant was. I have since written a letter to the state requesting that they provide an additional grant amount up to the amount for the bid that came in. There was only one bid. I'm sorry, I forgot to bring that information. It is here.
Last page.
And there was a stipulation in the agreement with the state that any bids that come in that are within 10% of the engineer's estimate would automatically be accepted, and with this being the lowest bid and within the 10%, therefore, it was automatically accepted. There were some comments that nobody had actually ever even seen this scenario in the 20 years or so that they've been in business. The other matter that we have before you is a contract with Tetra Tech in the amount of $25,000 for the construction engineering services for the project. Ken Kingsley is here, if you have any questions regarding that, and just looking for a motion to approve that contract.
And that $25,000 is through the, through the grant program?
The 25, the $25,000 is for the services that they would be providing for oversight of the project.
But it's in the grant, the...
Who's paying? Us or the grant?
I don't believe that that's in the grant. Ken, maybe you can help me with that?
And what that includes is, is MDOT is not backing down from this type of project the way that we have to, you have to provide the same type of inspection, quantity takeoffs, testing that MDOT normally provides on their projects. They don't, so, when it gets to concrete testing, which, we got to go outside to the consultant or a testing company to do that, when it gets to the signal wires up there, and those have to be tested. So, where, we were under initial belief that a lot of this could be field verified or onsite, instead of having to go out and physically hold to MDOT standards for a lot of the testing that they want to have done. And their documentation in terms of quantities placed, same thing, the paperwork on an MDOT project is just extreme, and we did not believe that that had to be done, and it does have to be done. I'm hoping that with, with Mike's assistance, he may be able to provide some of that documentation in terms of what happens that would minimize our time onsite. And if we can do that, we won't approach the dollar value that's there. I feel, knowing Mike's done on the current road project you have, I think it's a good match for, for some of that to happen if he has the time. The one bid that you had, though, was only, it was from Warren Contracting, just to give you a little update, there were like four bidders for actually the concrete part, there were a couple contractor holders that they had for the electrical part, no explanation why, there was only one bid submitted to MDOT. And as Lane said, it was within 10%, and they got no choice, but that's the reg, they have to award it. So, I don't know that much about Warren, but the work is scheduled, if everything goes right, to start within about another week, or a week and a half to two weeks. In fact, Warren Contractors called us for a pre-construction meeting to get that started and get the paperwork going. So, that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions on that at all? Thank you.
Can we get a motion to...
Do you have this covered, then, within the budget?
So, if for some reason we do not get that additional grant to cover the additional money that this is over, and then also for this, we could use the sidewalk money, because we've come in under budget for the sidewalks for this year, so the funds are something that we would be able to utilize.
How much are we talking?
The overage, I think, was about $30,000?
About $35,000.
Yeah. And we had budgeted 75 for sidewalks, and this, in essence, really is a sidewalk project, and it would certainly be a shame to lose a $450,000 grant for about $50,000 total. I'm sure that Ken is going to do everything to keep that, not to exceed $25,000 for his work, to keep that to a minimum.
What about covering the overage? Do you need something now for that, or not? No?
That was just a grant, I'm sorry, that was just a letter that I sent to the state requesting that they provide additional grant monies to cover that overage.
What I'm saying is, are we going to have to come back and reapprove that overage in the event that they don't give it to us?
Yes, but we don't need that approval right now.
Correct. Okay. All right.
Indications are pretty good that we will be getting additional grant money.
Yeah, I just want to cover it in the event we don't.
Yeah, they usually have some unspent money, things that come in under budget.
Not that I don't trust the state.
Not this project, though, unfortunately.
I'll make a motion that we approve this contract in the amount of $25,000 for Tetra Tech in the Safe Routes to School program.
The be not to exceed $25,000.
Not to exceed $25,000.
Support. Motion support. Any other questions or concerns on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the road millage flyer.
What is in the packets is a draft fact sheet that I prepared, and also made sure that the attorney had an opportunity to take a look at it, to make sure that there isn't anything that is of a nature that we could not disperse this document. I had also provided it for everyone to get any type of feedback that you might have regarding this document. I have not received any feedback to date, so we can certainly discuss that at the meeting. One thing that I am particularly looking for is if we want to have an informational meeting, and when and where that would be, and also if there's any information here that you feel should either be excluded, or other information that you would like to include, or potentially modify some information here.
Commissioners, your goal on these fact sheets is to put out facts concerning the millage, not to take a position either for or against the position. So, when you're reading this, and I've read it, I think we scrubbed out quite a few things, it's designed to be neutral in terms of its presentation, just let the citizens know the facts, and what a yes vote would mean, and what a no vote would mean, and what you intend to do with, with the money. That's the basics here.
Anybody have any discussion points for the draft?
No, I think you covered, I think you covered everything pretty well, but I would suggest that if we have a meeting, we do it fairly soon, to give people enough time to digest it and ask their questions and understand it.
Anyone else come in?
How are these communicated, these fact sheets?
So, what we were potentially planning, since we've already passed our taxes in the newsletter out, and we don't have an opportunity to really do it through the water bill, is that we would use all avenues possible to try and get word out, so we would disperse it at places like the library, we'd have it in Millar Township Office, I'm sorry, City Office. We would put news out on Facebook, we'd have something on the DPW Electronic Science, we'd use every means available to us. Without going through that expense of potentially doing a mailer. Washington Life Center was another one, we were talking about having flyers there as well.
Okay. And tonight?
And tonight. And obviously, it was in the board packet.
Yeah, do you have it on the webpage?
Yeah, yeah, we can put it on the webpage as well, and then at the meeting, should we decide to have one, we'll obviously have the flyers available there as well.
Do you have it on the TV station?
Yeah, we can do that, too.
Good idea.
So, we, do you want any, anything else done as far as the board?
I guess if you don't have any feedback on the fact sheet, probably putting together a date for when we want to have any type of public forum, or if you just want me to schedule a date, I think probably either Washington Life Center or here having a public forum. Any preference?
Yeah, why don't you schedule something, and some put together for us?
Get it rolled out and just send a notice out, then?
Yep.
Okay. I'll probably have it sometime mid-October.
All right, now moving on to new business, we have the lead and copper rules. We have the lead and copper rules for the rule changes. And Mike, you wanna help us with this one?
I gave you a brief summary of the new laws, but it's important to say that there was a seminar and apparently there might be changes to some of the good. So I can give you a brief rundown on what's gonna cost us, what's left to do in our system. We have roughly estimated 1,902 taps in town. All those 1,902 taps, as of August of 2018, we have changed 1,285 taps. We, we have 617 taps left to do, which we can't verify if they're lead or copper because of the fact that no one started keeping records until the late 1980s. So there could be way less than this.
Mike, help us lay people out. What do you mean by taps?
Water taps.
Connections?
Yes, connections to the water mains.
Okay.
So there could be half that many. There could be 500. We don't know until we get out and start digging up the shut offs and find out what's on each side to verify the taps. The estimated cost to replace a water tap now would be, we're gonna be responsible from the main to the first valve in the house. That's gonna be roughly about $2,000 per tap, per home. Which includes the labor materials, proper restoration, and street repairs when necessary. The cost to, to expose remaining water lines at the homes is gonna be about $400 per home to do this. Some of them in driveways, so we've got to place the cement, the sand, the dirt, and some of the stop boxes if they're deteriorated or broken. The...
So by expose, this is just to gain access to see what?
Yes, at the valve box, to go down the valve box and see what's on each side of the valve, the shelf valve that's in the home.
Okay.
Okay? And then to, to meet the 20-year replacement that they're gonna put on us, we'd have to do 30 a year. So total cost with that would be $1,234 over the 20 years or $61,700 a year.
Could you repeat those? Can you repeat those numbers?
It costs us $1,234,000 or $61,700 a year to replace the remaining taps. The cost to, to determine the type pipe material on the other 617 would be roughly $246,800 or another $12,340 a year. So total cost to us is gonna be about $74,000 a year when this thing goes into effect. If it goes into effect.
If it goes into effect and the verbiage that they actually put into it?
Yes.
So...
And that's, that's it. That's, that's the figure, that's the numbers.
Do you use ready-to-serv fees for those?
We could. We'd have to determine how, you know, how we're gonna pay for this, if we're gonna use ready-term fees, ready-to-serv fees or some other means.
Yes, I always like that they give us all these edicts, but they don't give me money to do it.
Oh, yes. Yep, they do that quite often. That's, that's basically it. That's what I can give you for right now until I get more information, what's...
Like the distribution system materials inventory, can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
That would be the size of our water mains, the type of water mains we have, which I've already gave this commission. I have all that documentation already. I'm ready for my DSMI report right now. I can turn it in tomorrow and it's all good.
All right, so once you've submitted that, that's kind of an inventory of the entire city, right?
Exactly, yes.
Now that the surface lines from the main to the meter become our responsibility, that's included in this?
This, as of August of 18, all this will be included.
But you'll add that in?
Yes, all this will be included in that report.
Okay. Does that essentially then, at that point, we're kicked off? We have to start this 5% a year? We don't know.
I, I don't know yet.
So that's great.
That's, we, that's a gray area right now and I'm trying to, with these other changes that's from this thing today, I gotta read up on and find out what's going on.
Okay. The other concern I have is the roads. We're talking about resurfacing roads. We're cap milling and capping.
Some of, some of the roads...
This week you're milling and capping this though.
These roads, believe it or not, they were already done.
Okay.
I mean, they were done.
That's, that's the good news.
That's good news.
All right.
Some of the other roads that we are going to do may only have one or two left on them. We can knock those out, go ahead and do them. That's, that's a good thing. I mean, it's, we know which houses we have, so we can pick and choose which streets. Now if I have a street that still has 30 taps to go down, we're gonna leave that street alone and go back to the one that has five taps that we can get knocked out and get the street done.
But you won't know until well after January on a final report on this?
Right.
From the state?
Right.
And it could be even next July before they really finalize everything?
Well, the letter I got says everything takes effect January 1st, 2019. And the seminar, it say, said it's a question mark, they don't know. So I gotta figure out what's going on.
And then we've got 20 years to replace these?
Yeah, 20 years to replace them.
Okay.
And that's it, and that's all.
Anyone else have any more questions for?
Yeah, I do. Not necessarily for Mike. I guess this one's more for our city attorney. If someone has their water tested, now this, once this takes effect, the surface lines become our responsibility. And they exceed the limits of, you know, lead and copper, whatever. Do they have, I mean, ultimate goal here is that we should be providing safe water through our entire system, which now includes service lines.
Right. We do provide safe water to our system.
Here's, here's my question. If someone's determined that they have unsafe water, can they make a demand on the city to replace their line? Not worry about when you're gonna get to it, but legal action?
We're gonna continue the same practice we do right now.
Okay.
We come across these service lines, we replace them. We don't let them sit there for, you know, we replace them immediately. So, and we do, do lead and copper monitoring in the city and discussed every three months.
Yeah, you guys, as you pointed out to me earlier, you guys are actually checking taps periodically.
Ken, how long, how long have you been doing that for? 10 years, 15 years?
Sure.
Yeah.
So you're already complying with the first part, the 10% of the...
Oh, yes.
System here is, you check that, the tap? Mike, there will, there will be a protocol in place if there is an exceedance in a test result and it's, I think it's gonna be pretty rigorous. And it's gonna be burdensome upon the community if some, if one, even just one tests above the limit. I've seen it in a few communities and DEQ is relentless on pursuing these matters right now for many other reasons. Also, you should be aware that there is a municipal mounting potential challenge on this because there's municipal groups that are growing angry with the state for imposing regulations without funding. And it's almost like a form of taxation being spread down to the local governments from the standpoint of here's a new reg, have fun with it, you know, we know it's gonna cost you a million bucks, but let us know how it goes. And there's some pushback, which might be the question mark you're seeing?
Yep.
On, on January. But everyone should, should be mindful, the DEQ and the state of Michigan is gonna take these issues very seriously. And I think you've gotten that in, that impression.
Oh, yes.
And it's, it's an outgrowth of the issues in Flint and it's an outgrowth maybe now driven by the Detroit Public Schools. And it's gonna be a serious matter. We had an anomaly test and it was definitely just off the charts in the Oakland County community. And, and the DEQ, it, it ended up costing six months and lots of expense because of one test result. So the question they haven't grappled with yet, Mike, is, is the protocol for taking some of these tests. The one that ended up causing problems in Oakland County was taken by a citizen who refused to let the protocol be followed for the test and nobody really knows what tap it came out of.
Exactly.
And it could have been 16 feet of pipe within the house before he took their water sample. And as of this point, we're not responsible for the piping in the house. Your responsibility is to get the water safely to the house. So the water testing protocol is gonna be very important.
Yeah, that's changing also.
Right.
Yep.
Anything else for Mike on the...
Just comment. Mike, I wanna thank you for pulling this information together for us.
This is really good.
And Elaine, I'd like to thank you for honoring my request to have a discussion on it.
Of course.
It's good stuff.
All right. Nothing else, we're gonna move on. Just stay there, Mike. Don't get comfortable.
Mike, give me a sneak away.
We're gonna move on to community weigh finding signage and a letter from Mike.
Well, hi there again. Well, y'all read the letter, you've seen the signs? Do you have any questions? Sign one, the same poles, utilize the same poles we have now. The business loop signs coming down the M29 corridor, we can mark, put on signs, there's this in sign poles here. No parking, municipal parking signs. We're going to exact same places we are now. We'll get a couple of extras, so we need to throw some here or there, we can. Anything else?
What are you gonna do with all those signs that are already out there that have, you know, the courts down here? Are those all staying or being replaced with these?
Those, those are gonna be replaced with these. The 72nd District Court and all that, the boat launch. They're gonna be little ones on the bottom, 'cause we only need two of them.
I mean, that just says entertainment restaurant shots allows you ferry.
There, there was another sign that he had mocked up that had a couple of those other things as well as kind of extras underneath.
That's what usually a lot of people are always looking for, the court and the...
The boat launch.
Yeah.
Ferry.
The ferry, the school.
Well, that's...
Of course, that's not in here. We, I, you know, we're not gonna do anything with that for the schools?
No. No, just the port, the border, phonehouse, and shopping center, gamer shopping center.
Okay.
That's all.
Safe to assume that the dimensions all meet MDOT requirements, that kinda stuff and regulations?
These are on our roads.
Oh, okay.
And yes, they do.
We, we templated this off of the MDOT regulations.
Yeah, okay. Like I said, safe to assume. Okay.
Yeah, one, one conversation that we have had about this is that one of the things that's important to have on these signs is the ferry. And with the status of the ferry now being kind of a question mark and not certain about when that's going to move forward and if it will move forward, is timing wise for the signs. The money that we would be looking for, for purchasing these signs is grant money we'd be getting from the EDA. So at this point, I'm not certain what we want to do with this moving forward. It would be nice to get, in essence, an approval to move forward with this, but I don't think that we would actually purchase the signs probably until spring, give it an opportunity to see if anything further develops with the ferries.
You can either put the ferry on or take it off.
Well, be optimistic. Put it on, cover it up with a, with a plate or something. It doesn't happen for a while.
Can always put the stickers on, like...
Put a sticker on it.
Like the last time when we had the ferry signs, remember?
And when it's back, take the plate off. Can you just pencil it in, Mike?
Oh, I can, I can.
Sounds good.
So what's the pleasure of the commission?
So you wanna wait it till spring or you wanna approve it now and not purchase them till spring?
That would be the preference, is just to approve it now.
So this is your figure?
Right.
2887.63.
I would say not to exceed that amount.
While the shipping's not in there, we didn't know if we were gonna change the signs or not, so shipping is not included.
Okay, so we can do it not to exceed that plus shipping?
Plus shipping.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve these signs to a tune of $2,987.63, not to exceed that plus shipping cost.
Support.
Motion support. Any other questions on the signage? Hearing none. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to ordinance number 2018-007, sign introduction for first We had a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
We have support.
I'll support it for discussion.
All right, questions and concerns on it?
I, I have a couple requested revisions from the building official. First and foremost, with the discussion that we've had from the sidewalk cafes, we wanted to include language under the general requirements that addresses the clear walkway. So we would like to include the language, a minimum of five feet of unobstructed pedestrian access along the sidewalk shall be maintained at all times.
What page?
That's something that we would want to include under the general requirements for all signs, so that starts at page three.
Okay.
So it could be J. And then also at planning commission on page 12, the sign permits required, there was the exception for signs which a permit is not required. One was exempt signs and they removed the language for temporary signs as regulated by the division unless temp, unless otherwise specified. Susan would like that language back in upon kind of further discussion and contemplation. Temporary signs in essence include political signs and, and other such similar signs, so absolutely every resident would be required to come get a permit for a temporary sign. The language in the temporary signs for the exclusion, just earmarks a couple things that in essence would need to have a permit. Those include banners, balloon signs, teardrop flags. So that would make things much easier from a perspective for a building official department. So we'd like to add that language back in. The language is on page 20 of the marked up version. It's number two that was crossed out. Temporary signs as regulated by Division B6 unless otherwise specified therein. It's kind of one of those like double negative things and is a little bit confusing. And when I was talking to the building official and we were kind of walking through scenarios and signs, that was something that we, we realized that that was really in there for an important process.
Anyone else have anything?
Not real clear on temporary signs. What, what is a temporary sign? You talked about campaigning and such.
So it starts on page 10.
Of new or old?
New.
It's eight on the old. 'Cause I had that.
And it goes through to page 11. And it goes through to page eleven.
So, if someone's having a garage sale, a yard sale, do they have to come in and get permission to put a sign on?
Would that language struck out, the planning commission had done, yes, they would, as would anyone for any type of political sign or anything. So, that's why when we actually kind of walked through it, we realized that it was kind of important to have that.
Put the language back in, the answer is no.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
We've heard many complaints about nitpicking stuff and if-
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
If you put the language back in, all of that-
Someone puts a garage sale sign out and she writes them off.
No, that all goes away with the-
Good, that's my concern.
Yeah, the only temporary signs that would require coming into the building department and getting a permit are banners, balloon signs, and teardrop signs. Those are the only temporary ones.
But this does limit the number of temporary signs that we are-
Yeah, one of the significant challenges in writing and drafting this new sign ordinance is that the law has changed since ours was written back in like the seventies or eighties, is that you can no longer have anything in your ordinance that bases signs on content. So, a lot of communities used to have very particular language for political signs. So, in essence, if you have to read the sign to determine what kind of sign it is, you can't have any type of language in your ordinance that requires that.
It all has to be content neutral.
Okay.
So, it's been very difficult and challenging for communities to be able to-
So, we fault, this will actually not interfere on constitutional rights or-
No.
And it won't be in conflict with state law either.
No, you can say what you want, Mr. Mayor. It's content neutral and, you know, there was this debate on whether or not color of the sign would end up, you know, being controlled, but it's pretty much limited to speech.
Yeah, there is the one particular thing is that you can't have anything lewd.
Right.
Anything what?
Anything lewd.
Oh, I thought you said-
Lewd.
Is it safe to assume that sandwich boards are considered portable signs?
Portable signs, A-frame signs, yes. And keep in mind, this is first reading. We'll have second reading as well.
How is the sandwich board signs going to be regulated when the buildings inspectors not work? Is that some of our issues, right?
And that's something that we've-
Weekends.
We've kind of talked about in, I think, a previous meeting.
Weekends or Fridays or?
We need to work, or I should say, I need to work with the attorney and the police department and the building official to determine how we can do some code enforcement on the weekends.
Because when the sheriff's out of town, they do whatever they want, or I'm just wondering?
We will find a way around that loophole.
Okay. Even when they don't want to do it? That's not my job.
The law is the law.
Right.
All right.
Am I being a, just, you know, harsher that I do not see how we can put A-frame signs in front of stores and things like that, sandwich boards, whatever, and not interfere with pedestrian traffic?
As long as you're able to maintain the five feet that we were talking about with the cafe. So, if you have a situation where you have a sandwich board sign and a cafe, you're going to need to maintain five foot total.
So, the-
So, you can't-
On either side.
Total in front of your business. Yeah, you'll have to maintain a complete path. Whatever you have out there, you'll have to maintain a complete path.
It's not divided in half and you just add them together.
No.
Because you can't have that sandwich board in the middle of five.
You don't get two, you're saying you don't, do you get two and a half feet signed, two and a half feet?
And that was-
That doesn't count.
That was one of the reasons why we felt it important to include that language in the signs as well as the sidewalk to make that clear that at all times you're required to maintain a five-foot-
Unobstructed.
Clear path.
Unobstructed. The problem is-
Usually it's the health department that controls the smoking, but there is an ordinance at twenty feet away from the entrance of a door or an entrance of an outdoor. So, I have seen people that would leave that and just get just outside the areas. They had a bar in Cotterville, just get outside the areas and light up their cigarette while they're in that area that's no smoking, they're also in that area for the pedestrians.
I'm not familiar with that law or ordinance at all. If you can share that with us, we'll-
The health department, they enforce it.
Yes, please.
Couple of things. I know we've had this issue in the past, too. Some of these setback requirements for a lot of these businesses, you could never do it, I mean, in our one section. But I also noticed in the old section on page seventeen, we have a thing prohibiting signs within the city. One is signs on park tight benches. I hope that excludes all these little plaques that we have on the park benches that somebody doesn't come back and say, well, you know.
Which page was that?
Seventeen in the old section.
Oh.
H, a little over half down.
I don't think that there's anything like that.
Well, I'm just saying, it says, the following are prohibited, signs on park tight benches, and we had those little signs. So, somebody could technically say, or are you talking advertising signs on a park bench?
So, definition of sign, a sign which pertains to the principal use of the premises.
You're thinking if they consume in memorandum or in memory of so-and-so that-
And some of them had cute little sayings from the family and stuff. I mean, I've, you know, I've been reading some of them.
I don't think it needs a definition of sign.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's clear there.
It's more so a plaque.
Flag?
Yes, okay. And then down farther on that same page, it has projecting signs except as permitted in the nautical district. And I know I've talked to you about this before, and I kind of wonder why projecting signs are only allowed in the nautical district and nowhere else. I think that's kind of ridiculous. We have a whole loop here with a lot of businesses that could use a projecting sign as long as they conform to everything else. I don't see why.
One area of businesses allowing to do it and not another.
Bingo, you know.
And that's something that I think could easily be struck.
Yep. That one, I, you know, then you have the vehicles used as signs, and I know, does that include the ones we've had before where somebody puts their saying on it and parks it down there and?
I don't know that necessarily would be a sign so much as a freedom of speech.
Sign has to relate to the content of the use.
Okay.
To be a sign.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify for-
It's a fine line between freedom of speech and a sign.
All right. You know, there was a typo in the old section on page eighteen. I don't know if you fixed that in the new one. It had under one A, election ballot.
Oh, yeah. We corrected that. I think it was a couple of places.
And I mean, you also have in here the location of any sign permitted by this section, not interfere with pedestrian traffic, driver safety. I mean, I noticed you've put that in there multiple times.
Stress the importance of it.
Is that defined as the twenty-five foot triangle? That's what we go by in some, in the sign of businesses, is the visual twenty-five foot triangle? I don't know if that's-
Yeah.
Is that?
And then like flags and stuff, you're only allowing one. I notice a lot of these were just allowing ones.
Yeah, the purpose of that is that there are such a variety of different signs that are allowed.
Okay.
So, you have to try and, in essence, limit the quantity of each different type because there's so many types that are allowed because we can't do content.
I know you got balloon sign. What about those signs or the ones that people use with the little fans in them?
Those are in here. The, anything on feather signs?
Banner, ground.
Teardrop flag, I think, is it? Yeah, so on page three, number eleven, teardrop flag, also known as feather flags, wind feather flags, faux flags.
But you were thinking more of the ones that's inflated.
No, I'm talking to inflatable ones where the little thing is in there and it's got a little face on it and it's one like they have out on King Road.
Thought that those were in here somewhere.
That might fall under balloon sign.
Yeah, because it is inflated.
Lighter than air, gas filled.
We could potentially expand the definition of the inflatable signs to include, you know, like the blow up-
Yeah, I don't know if they're even called.
The things with the blowers, with the guy that kind of wiggles. Either that or like the big gorillas and things that you see that are blown up by a blower.
Well, I guess I'd like to see the projecting signs not limited to just the nautical district. I mean, that's one thing I'd like to see out of there.
So, we've got those three revisions, adding the general requirements, removing the nautical, and adding back that temporary sign regulation.
Anything else?
How do they deal with these drop boxes in a sign ordinance? That they drop off in the, that they don't ask to have a business there, and the use of the shopping centers for the business people that are there, and they drop off these donation boxes at times and garbage all over the place. We've had to clean one up at, I know at DPW, we cleaned one up at Shortcut Road, and if you don't, and they got on, don't tow them away, call us, we'll come and get them. But they drop them there without the owner's permission and then tell them?
We've been actively going after some of those.
Okay, because they're not operating as a business on that shopping center property, right? I mean, that's how I deal with it in other units.
Yeah, they're not signs, so they wouldn't fall under this. It's more so like an ancillary use of a business.
And some of them are actually in the right of way, too, so. Hearing non-roll call vote for this, please.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Did have one further question about this. It's not directly related to the sign ordinance per se regarding enforcement for signs that are on public property. I know we have a lot of events and things throughout town that people put signs at the three hundred Broadway property and throughout our parks. We do have those posts that have been placed at three hundred Broadway and a couple of other locations around town for people to put signs on. And generally, I believe that when people come and have special events, and that would be the time for them to request any type of signage on public property. Is that correct understanding for sign uses on public property?
Doesn't our current ordinance prohibit it at this point unless it's, you give permission?
And that would be, in essence, my understanding. So, when we have things like Heritage Days, Maritime Days, when they come to us with a special event permit, they should be asking for placement of their signs on the public property.
People should just not be putting them on the property without permission, correct, you know? Otherwise, that's what's happened in a lot of the parks, and it just junks up all our parks with people's signs.
And we did have to address that with Maritime Days this year, and they made corrections as soon as they were made aware of it, so.
And that was in particular signs that were in the easements, which that is prohibited.
Right.
And we're able to go around, and we've moved a lot of signs back from within the easement.
That begs the question, how are they aware? I mean, they're not going to go look up our codes. So, do you hand out something to them at that time that tells them?
Maybe it should be on your permit request.
That's kind of what I was thinking, is if you want a sign as part of your special event, you know, please request it this time.
As you're being granted this, these are the regulations for placing signs stipulated.
Yep, right on the form.
That's pretty much what I was thinking, so I will move forward with that. Thank you.
And the removal of it would be within, what, forty-eight hours from the time that it's over?
Yeah, make sure, yeah.
Instead of two weeks?
Or never.
Or never.
All right, we're moving on to the twenty-four seven live stream camera.
So, this is an interesting proposal that was brought to me by the company that provides live streaming cameras. They have been providing live streaming cameras for railroad enthusiasts to be able to see railroads crossing, I think it was in Virginia. One thing that they're looking to do is expand their venues and I guess their membership for their site, people that are going to the site looking at webcams. And they have actively seeked us out and are looking to see if we're interested in having a webcam that will focus on the river and the freighter traffic. Prior to the meeting, I did speak with the mayor about this, and one thing that he had asked about is if we could have another camera. And I did speak with the company, and they seemed to be interested in having as many, I guess, cameras as we can put up there. The focus, as I said, is for their website is freighter traffic would be the camera. We would potentially be looking to have another one that would point to the city. They also are looking to get more information about some of the events and things in town because they want to be able to kind of promote some of the events they had asked about, in particular, the lighting up the town blue for autism. I let them know that we don't have any particular events or anything, but to contact the chamber and see if that's something that they might want to work with them to coordinate something for their website as well. The only costs that we would have would be for internet and electric. They install the equipment and provide the equipment. I think that they would probably be able to provide two cameras to us, having conversations with them. One of the things that we would have to take into consideration is placements of the camera because we want to have it in a location where we already have internet and electric so that we don't have to generate any additional costs for adding a whole new drop line for internet connection. The location that might make the most sense would be possibly on the lighthouse. That's something that when they come out, take a look at the town, assess it, figure out where a good location would be, we'd bring it back to the city commission for consideration. With it being at the lighthouse, we could either tap into the guy center or the waterworks for the internet and electricity. So, at this point in time, just looking for approval to move forward with this company to explore location options.
And will they allow us to add a link to both our city webpage and the chamber webpage so that you could actually view this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I did talk to Erica about it, and she was extremely excited, but she didn't think the chamber could help sponsor some of it if we needed an additional cost. She could maybe, she could work with some of the businesses in the area that the webcam would be, you know, for a city view, you know, and we may get a sponsor. We've had, I've talked to a couple of businesses and they're very interested in it, so.
If it's in a location where we can already tap into sources that we're already paying for, the incremental cost for this would be so nominal.
Mm-hmm.
You know, really, it would just be electricity for- You know, really, it would just be electricity for the camera.
And I see this going on in a lot of, I mean, Galveston, I used to watch when I worked Midnight's boats going in and out, I believe it was Galveston Harbor for hours.
Yeah, the, the letter of support that they have in here, testimonial from Ashland, Virginia, I don't know if you all had an opportunity to read that, it was just amazing the benefit that they got from the camera and some of the stories about what people do, you know, they, they go online, they, they have web chat rooms where they talk about it, they want to go to the place where the camera is so that they can actually be on camera and wave, so it really is a good marketing tool for the community as well.
Can we get a motion?
Our only cost is electricity to run the camera.
I'll make a motion that we allow the city manager to move forward with the stream time live setup to, for locations and whatever else.
Support. Any other questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. One thing off my bucket list now. Working, can we move on to roasted with perks outdoor cafe service?
This is a request similar to what you received in the past from Blue Pike Cantina that, in essence, predated the ordinance for sidewalk cafes. We still have not completed the sidewalk cafe ordinance, it's not fully adopted, we're kind of still in the middle of first and second reading adoption. So as, as was noted earlier, they did apologize for moving forward with that and they're going through the process that we have in place at the moment to be able to get approval for the outdoor cafe seating. They have included their, their plan and everything seems to be consistent with what we're doing with Blue Pike Cantina and one thing that we would definitely stress is to make sure that they maintain that, that five foot clearance, like we talked about earlier about with the sidewalk seating and the sandwich board sign is that you need to maintain complete five foot clearance.
Mrs. Gibbs? Can you come up, step up here for a minute? Now, you're aware it's a five foot, unobstructed, no sidewalk, no sandwich board?
Absolutely, yes.
And why was it in there today?
Um, I'm not sure why, but the sandwich board, actually, actually, the sandwich board I was not aware of that we weren't supposed to have it, but I will definitely keep it removed from the sidewalk.
I don't think it's so much that you're not supposed to have it, it's just that the, the whole complete thing should.
Was it in the center?
Right in the center.
Okay.
And that, that might just be education for your staff.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's been the complaint, it's right in the middle of the path.
Okay.
So you have, in essence, two feet over here, or two and a half feet over here, two and a half feet over here, you need to have a full five foot.
Okay, that's not a problem.
Yes, please.
All right, I wish this would have been more to scale.
My husband did it, I'm sorry.
So I went down and took a look and did some measuring myself and then I just sat there and I watched people trying to maneuver through there and it's really, really tight. I saw people, an elderly gentleman with a cane, he could barely get through, and then you had a couple elderly women, they had to go single file to get through there. The problem is, is what happens is with your case, you, you have it a lot more narrow than where it is at the Blue Pike. Then people move your chairs around, I saw one day where they moved the chairs out and they blocked the entire sidewalk and some guy had to walk all the way around.
With all due respect, I have no control over that.
Well, but that's going to be the problem.
Okay.
If, if all this goes in there, you're going to have to control it unfortunately to keep that five foot opening.
Okay.
My suggestion, because these umbrellas, that also forces your table out when they get opened up, my suggestion that you just go with some benches that you can put right against your thing because you just have such a narrow space. And then you have a tree on each side over here, which isn't your problem, but now they're bobbing and weaving between the trees and the stuff and the car doors and the.
Okay.
The sad part is, is it's tighter where you are.
Right.
So you're really limited on what you can get in there.
Sure, sure.
And then somebody left a wagon sitting out the one time and I, I just sat and watched just to see what people would do and.
Okay.
It, it's really, really tight with the configuration that you have.
Okay, all right. Okay, so going back six years ago when we opened, we had those, and I know it's now present, I understand that, but nobody ever said anything to us back when we first opened. And we had those tables out, like, you know, for a long, long time and now all of a sudden there's a problem with it.
But technically, our ordinance states none of it should be there.
Okay.
And so nobody's really been enforcing it.
Okay, sure.
Okay.
All right.
And so now we're trying to catch up with that.
Got it.
Unfortunately.
So, okay, with Blue Pike Cantina, they've got that cordoned off.
Yeah.
Does that have a problem down there? I've heard people complain about that too.
I heard about the umbrella issue down there also.
Right.
But he's got 18 feet versus what you got.
All right.
He also serves liquor, beer and wine.
Okay.
That's the reason for the courting off.
Oh, I see, I see.
Yeah.
So you're telling me that I need to put benches up instead. I just want to say, for the first time in six years, we're actually making a profit and I believe because we did put these out, it is helping our business, but I do request that we are able to put something out.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, but, you know, we got to make requirements for the handicap, which requires all that.
I understand that, yeah.
And so all I'm saying is this configuration kind of isn't working, but maybe if you just had some smaller benches or something that was more flatter to the building so that they couldn't, I don't know, I, you know.
And then when they're able to reconfigure the chairs to what they want, and I know that's not your fault, but with that system.
I mean, it isn't, I mean, I can't control that every single day.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't think it's up to us to dictate what type of seating you have. It's up to me, you have to make sure that you have the five foot clearance zone.
Right.
At all times.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It's not up to us to tell you to, what to put in there.
Thank you.
But if it means working with your staff to make sure that they're keeping an eye out there, right? Since they're going to be out there now serving.
Right.
Remind the guests, hey, we have to keep this five feet open.
Okay.
Can't pull the chairs out there.
Okay.
Now, it could be very simple, just.
Sure.
A little training.
What about, what about putting the, the ropes out like they have down at Blue Pike to keep people in that five feet?
I don't know.
Well, I, I mean, it would certainly, would certainly help you and your staff, yeah. I mean, this is, you can't take it outside here.
Yeah.
We need to keep this five feet clear. I totally, I mean, I would think that would probably be an easy thing to do because I think your benches that you currently have will fit in, I think they'll fit. But you just got to, you don't have a lot of room to play with there.
Right.
I think that's what we're saying right now.
Sure.
So if you could come up with, you know, a similar, you know, what do we call them?
Yeah.
What do they call it?
Just a barricade.
Barrier, barrier of some kind, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Didn't, didn't at the last meeting we discuss that we had a problem with people that, from the audience that had made comments and stuff and we were going to revisit this?
We, we got feedback at that last meeting and we will be bringing back some modifications of the, the ordinance.
So we haven't, so we really haven't tweaked this to the way we want it?
No.
No.
Not yet.
This is an interim request.
Mm-hmm.
Per current ordinance.
Yeah. So in the meantime, if the ordinance changes and it affects you, you might have to reconfigure again.
Okay, so in the meantime, take my tables out of there.
Well, no.
No, no, no.
No, we're not saying that, it's.
No.
Now, one of, one of the issues that I think you're probably referencing is the fact that the barricade for Blue Pike, they have like a round base.
Right.
And, and the fencing and someone apparently had maybe tripped over that, I don't know if they were paying attention or what. And that's something that, trying to find some language to see if there's some way to address that.
Not only.
We did raise our umbrellas.
Yeah.
They're up seven feet, so it's not like somebody's going to run into them because somebody did complain. And so my husband went right out the next day and he raised those just so that it would be appropriate.
It just might take a little bit of tweaking before you can.
Okay.
Fix it.
And then the other thing was, that we got was during the festival, they had a lot of that problem. And the thing was with that one was that, that the people that were in these, in the Blue Pike, I guess that's what it is, and, and the other ones that had stuff out, that people had to walk out because they were, people who were standing outside visiting people inside the fenced in area.
Mm-hmm.
And how do you, how do you address that? You know, that's where the smoking comes in and stuff.
Well, but that happened down, down farther, not her block, but that happened down farther where a whole congregation was there. They plugged up the whole sidewalk again because they were all, and unless the, the shopkeeper's going to have to try to keep it clear.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, people are cutting around them, trying to be polite, not say anything, but, you know, I've seen that also.
That, that could even happen without a sidewalk.
Right. And that's just standing in front of a.
It can.
So, I mean, that's, I mean, how do you?
Yeah, because that was one of the complaints where it's that they came out of the area, just got outside, you know, walked with their cigarette and kids are walking by and so, but that's where the health department comes in with that 20 foot from the door. I'll get it for you.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's stay in point with roasted with perks and is there any more questions or concerns for Mrs. Gibbs at this point? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
I don't know if there was a motion.
No, there wasn't. Oh, can I get him? I thought you made a motion.
No, I didn't.
Oh.
We just went into discussion.
All right, well, we failed at that point. Can I get a motion then?
Sure, I'll make the motion, we approve.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion support, any other questions now back on schedule? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you have a roll call vote for this?
We're still in discussion.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
No.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to city manager review.
I guess she didn't distribute them yet. We, we have a couple of different forms that we could use. We can either use the same form that was utilized in the past or Lisa had found another form. So either form, whatever it is that you want to utilize, we need to appoint someone to be the person that would collect the forms and summarize and tally the information.
So this, this is a copy of the previous?
This is the previous one.
That was used? Okay.
Now, is this the one that was used in the past?
No, it's the other one.
The other.
I don't think so. We used to use the ratings for the numbers, I thought.
You just gave the majority unless there's something that ever required.
This one's on the front.
No, this was the one.
What, which one?
This one in the past with the numbers.
I don't, this is the one that was provided to me by Commissioner Lefferty, she has gotten it from Commissioner Lefferty, it was used in the past.
Well, we had several, but I thought we used the one with the rating because everybody always got confused on the numbering system, so.
Personally, I like the one with the, this one here.
Yeah, this.
It's, it's the rating.
The one with the tables.
Number rating, yes.
Yeah, this isn't, yeah, this wasn't the one we used last time.
So this is a closer version?
Yeah. But I like this one better.
Well, I guess first we should make a decision as a group, I know we're getting this kind of shorthanded, but I'd like to pick at least out a form to use tonight. Anyone have any other suggestions or on a form?
I'm good with this.
That one?
I'm fine with that.
Anyone else have any issues with this one as the?
Which one is that, Nasa?
That's the one with the numbering system. So we can quantify it.
One with the tables.
Yes.
Okay.
Are we in agreement then for that one?
Sure.
Okay.
I was also wondering if there's any interest in this becoming like a 360 type of valuation where not only commission does it, but also department heads and myself.
That sounds fair.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And you can have your, yeah, so you can give feedback to see how you're doing.
They have to listen to you every day, we only have to, you know, a couple times a month, so.
But I'd like to see two people, Wendy, would you like to help Lisa with that?
Sure.
And that way we have two diff, two people on it and it's.
Diane and I used to always do it for the before, so.
So that way two people are.
Just compile.
Compile it together and.
Okay.
As long as you're good with it.
Yeah.
So we can go ahead, fill this one out, turn it in to.
Well, let's make a, make it, somebody, somebody could make a motion that we use this one and that there are two delegates that are going to take care of it.
And also give copies to the department heads or all the employees.
Okay, department heads.
Department heads.
Did you want to give a due date as well?
Yeah. When do you want these turned in?
Do you want to get them to, where do you want them dropped at?
Can you scan it in?
We have an electronic person.
Anybody good with doing electronically or not? Would you prefer handwritten or electronic?
You could always drop.
I mean, I'll take them either way, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, you can drop it off at either commissioner, you can drop a sealed envelope with the clerk.
Okay.
Any of those three.
Okay. And then we'll have to have all these in, within the next two weeks?
October 1st.
October 1st?
If it's not like a feasible deadline.
Well, with vacations coming up, you know, somebody's got a vacation, October 1st?
That's fine.
All right, I'm going to put this in a motion, just so we actually, that we use the city manage, city manager valuation and it will be filled out by all commission in there and department heads in return to either city clerk or the two commissioners via email or turned in with a sealed letter or sealed envelope by October 1st.
Supports.
Any other questions on it? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Done.
Moving on to disbursements including payroll for $786,582.90.
Make a motion for the disbursement of $7,806.8.
Any questions or concerns on it?
$786,582.90.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Just to be clear.
Any questions on it? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
All right, moving on to 2018 request for local millage distribution from Sinclair County Parks and Recs Commission.
Just looking for a motion to approve the 2018 request for local millage distribution. This is all based upon the items that we have in our budget for 2018, 2019 for the parks. The fund balance at end of year, that is what, in essence, we're going into prior to the request, the request amount that we'll be getting from, for Parks and Rec Millage is $18,656,000.
Need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2018 request for local millage distribution.
Support.
Motion support, any other questions on it?
Question, so, can we go forward with this, when we have a suspended Parks and Rec program?
We still have parks.
Okay.
Yeah, the funds would be used in, in parks for parks improvements, primarily that's what they've been used for in the past, is capital items, because you can't use them, you can't use the funds for...
Programming.
For, yeah, staff.
Personnel.
Yeah, and it says right on here, park improvements at King Road Park and a tot lot, safety pads, informational board at Mariner Park, and beach parking improvements, that's what it's...
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carrie. Moving on to city managers' report.
I have attended the Tiffin Historical Commission meetings, I also attended the Earth EX Black Sky Simulation with the Emergency Management Group, which was, of course, another eye-opening performance. One of the things we kind of got out of that is, instead of 72 hours, you might want to prepare for 96. I participated in the visit, Gary Peters came to the community, actually really the county, and did a tour up the river, visited the Inon Water Street here in the city, and we did have an opportunity to talk to him about the issues that we're having with the fire pagers, so now that's on his radar, and hopefully we'll see a little bit of movement going on with that. The road projects, paving's pretty much complete, they'll just be working on some of the shoulder backfill. We had a very busy tax day on Tuesday, a lot of people in the office, which was nice to see people. I had a meeting with someone from DEQ that just kind of gave us a summary of some of the requirements, because we have been having so many issues with things like docs, complaints with docs, and the boat well, or I'm sorry, boat launch that was in essence cut in, so both myself and the building official and our DPW director met with DEQ and had a very lengthy discussion with him about things that require permits and kind of what they do. Also had a kind of meet and greet with the county assessor, just touching base with our, our assessing and what they do for us, some of the law changes that are going to potentially be coming down the pipeline for assessing, and how that may or may not affect us, not really much of a problem for us as it is for townships. I also attended the USDA meeting up in Port Huron today about the other grant loan programs that they offer. Unfortunately, didn't really paint a very great picture for grants, majority of what they have is really loans, and any type of grant is something that is small additional money that can be tacked on to the backside of a loan. Also been dealing with the property disputes, you gave me authorization several meetings ago to work with the attorney, and also our engineer for property disputes, we've met and started looking into those property issues. We'll be in the office tomorrow, Comcast is coming to install our new phone system in our administrative offices at the Guy Center. If all goes well with that, then hopefully next week we'll be rolling out the new phones to the other locations, so hopefully that will enable us to provide a little bit better service to the public with that new phone system. And will certainly make things easier for us, being able to do direct transfers to other buildings. That's all I got.
Any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, we're going to move on.
Oh, sorry, one other thing, we also filed some cases with the courts regarding some outstanding blight issues that we've gotten no traction on.
Yes.
Quick one, what's the status of the 15-minute parking sign?
You know, I've...
Okay.
Order.
All right.
Sorry, I forgot to get back to you on that, it's been a busy day.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to Commissioner Privilege and Mr. Clausen, why didn't you start us out tonight?
Well, I'd just like to, everybody take a look at this, the election that's coming up for our millage, and look at, do you want roads or don't you want roads fixed, so? And that's all I have to say about it, thank you.
I just want to start this off by saying that I am not being critical of the job that anybody is doing, you know, around the town at all. I, I know that we are, you know, we're, there's, there's understaffed, and there's a lot going on, but, so what I guess we need to do is that we need to start asking our neighbors and our community and ourselves to really start digging in and start taking care of some of these blight issues that we have going on around town. You know, we're sitting here and we're, you know, worried about overheads, you know, the, the umbrellas and the flags and everything else that are going up, and so we got people looking, looking up, but what's happening is, people are also, they're tripping over, like, grass in the cracks that is, you know, six to eight inches high in certain spots. We've got, you know, along my morning walk, I'm seeing where we've lost signs, and the metal is sticking out of the sidewalk, three or four inches, those are dangerous, there's holes, like where signs have actually been pulled out, that somebody can definitely go in, and it's not just on city property or that kind of thing, but, you know, so, I think we just need to make people, people need to be more aware of what's going on, and start having a little pride in what, in their property, and I think us as a, you know, as a community, we just need to kick in and just get this job done, start taking care of some blight issues, just start thinking zero tolerance on blight and overgrowth and dangerous things, that's all. So, again, I'm not being critical of anybody, I'm just trying to make people aware and just trying to bring awareness out, that's all, so, yeah. Nothing.
I'm good, thanks.
You know, I don't have a whole lot tonight, I want to thank Chief Langston for coming out, and it was some good news, and hopefully you can carry it on, and I wished our other grant did better, it didn't even make it through the original sort, we couldn't even get through the computer sort, that one was written by the city grant writer, which was, we should have made it through the original sort, and we never did. But at least this one made it through, and we're close on another one through for radios also, through the county grant program, so, thank you very much. And other than that, I'd like to get a motion to go into closed session, to review a legal opinion for purchase or lease of real property, and a discussion connected to negotiating on a collective bargaining agreement with employees represented by the POAL.
So moved?
Support. All in favor?
Vote.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan?
I got it.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
There may or may not be any business done after the, after we conclude the closed session.